That are written inside the city limits are very different than the ones that are in the unincorporated and the smaller areas of Sedgwick County, so that's that distinction. So that we're a lot busier, obviously, inside the city limits than our county counterparts are. We have 25 total employees and fully staffed, and our operating budget for non-salary and non-benefits is just over $1 million this year, including funding for illegal dumping. Now, that's, that's a lot. That is a lot, and we will spend every dime of that and probably be out of money in the fourth quarter and asking for more, much to Mr. Leighton's dismay. So what does all that actually mean? So we're complaint-based, so when I say to citizens, "We want your complaints." We want all of your complaints. We want them online. We want you to call us. We'll take a sticky note. You can call your council member. You can tell us at a neighborhood association. We want them in any way, shape, or form that you can give them to us, because that's our job, is to resolve those residential nuisance and housing complaints. Okay? It's all we do in our division. So that generates for us about 8,500 to 9,000 cases a year, and that's, that's a few. Tall grass and weeds are going to generate between 2,500 and 3,000 of those cases, depending on how much it rains. This year, we anticipate less, because nobody's going to be able to water. We'll just leave it at that. And unless nature waters, we don't think we're going to have that many tall grass and weeds cases. And then illegal dumping will generate another 1,500 to 1,800 sites that are handled just through a work order system, because that's a little different. We've, we get those complaints and we just clean them up. We get them and we verify and we clean them up. We get them, we clean them with, you know, it's quicker than case management, because illegal dumping tends to be on, on right-of-ways and in alleyways. Not that it doesn't happen in parks and other places like that, but the part that we deal with is going to be on that public area. Now, why do I tell you all that? To build a little credibility, we see some things, okay? We see some things. Now, the other thing I would point out is, much like Bel Air, we have a pretty good success rate in achieving voluntary compliance. So generally speaking, 86, 87, 88% of the time, a gentle nudge, right? A notice of violation, a door hanger, a reminder that you can't park a car there, you can't let your grass grow, that you can't store furniture on your front porch. People will clean that up, right? They will do the right thing and, and clean that up. But you really earn your money, and you spin your wheels, and you spend your time and effort on those cases that are not resolved voluntarily. So, that's where we're going to spend some time tonight, just talking about processes. And please, if you just have a burning question, stop me. I'm pretty free-flowing on all of this kind of stuff. I talked to a lot of neighborhood associations and district advisory boards and air capital area aging groups and church groups. Any place that somebody wants to talk about code enforcement, I will go and do that. So you're not, probably going to ask me any questions that are going to throw me too much for a loop at this point. So periodically, you'll see us in the news. That's always a fun day. I think this week, it was illegal dumping. One of the news stations had a little article about dumping down south and how frequently it happened. And so those statistics were statistics that they received from us, because our illegal dumping budget's about $300,000 a year. So like I said, it's always fun when, when CAKE is helping us to resolve an issue or KWCH or one of the other local stations, or publications, too. So hopefully, that doesn't befall you as well. Now, in order to, to give you a visual, you've got tiny little pictures, but I want to put those on the screen to give you some of the most common case types that we deal with, so you can see when we talk about them, what they actually look like. So here it is. The infamous tall grass and weeds are, in our world, a TGW. And as a bonus, the one on the left, I threw in a vacant, neglected, and boarded-up building, just so you could see that as well. So these are what our before pictures would look like when we send jobs to contractors. Obviously, a lot of seasonality in this. Other kinds of seasonal issues that we will deal with. Just out of curiosity, did you, do you ever get complaints about boats and RVs being parked out amongst the people? Right? Yes. I heard that from your code enforcement person back here. I heard a hearty, hearty yes back here. So, so one of the things that we've done purely for survival, I would say, in Wichita, is we have what's called a use season. And so from April 1st until about November 1st every year, we know that those things are going to be in use. So as long as they're operable, have, I mean, I'll just be blunt, the tires are aired up, nobody's trying to live in the RV, they're not discharging sewage on the yard or down the street, there's nobody trying to live in them, they're not raising dogs in them, they're not selling drugs out of them, they're not doing crimes in them. We're not going to get too worried about those complaints. We might have a general, general conversation to say, "Hey, you really need to park that a little further back. It's impeding traffic or sight." But we, there's no way. There's literally no way you could keep up with those kinds of complaints in the warmer months, when people have those items out and they're using them. So use season. I promised Paula I would mention that. So, other seasonal things, air conditioner's working. My heater doesn't work. My air conditioner doesn't work. This, that, and the other. But those fall under housing cases more than exterior conditions, and that's a whole different ballgame. All right. Now, these are fun. Residential bulky waste, and we see it. We see it in dumpster loads. We see it in staggering amounts. I understand that you guys might have some properties that are excessive collectors, which I believe is the most politically correct way to describe a hoarding house. We'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later, because those are really two-pronged cases. So, but yep, that's what that looks like for us. The one on the left, again, is a very interesting case for us. That was a property that was fenced. We knew what was happening behind that fence, but we had no legal right to enter the property until, thank you, Kansas Wind, the fence blew down and we could see it. And boy, it was game on after that, because it was a crime hub. People were stealing, and they were, they were bringing goods back to that house. It was vacant, had been for many, many years, with an out-of-country owner. So we were able to actually address the residential bulky waste. There were seven inoperable vehicles. There was a swimming pool that had bad, bad things in it. The house was very, very dilapidated, to the point that we were able to condemn and tear down the house as an emergency demolition. We towed all of the vehicles. We cleared the lot. We moved, we removed the noxious weeds, the bamboo, the invasive bamboo that was there, and it's all assessed against the property now. So that was a special one. But the, but the residential bulky waste does show a good picture there. Inoperable vehicles on private property. You ever hear any complaints about that? "That car's been parked there forever. It's not got a tag. It's on jacks. The hood's up. They're not working on it. They don't drive that. Why do they need so many cars?" Any of that sound familiar? There we go. Thank you. I want to keep you around back here.
He sees more than we do. We see it, but he sees more.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Again, examples. So inoperable vehicles, we're going to need more than just untagged or unexpired tagged to consider it inoperable. It's going to need something else. There's some examples of that here. On jacks, hood up, parts missing, the cab full of trash and junk, which means you can't drive it, so that means it's inoperable. We don't do, as, in my opinion, we don't tow as many vehicles as we could or should. We tend to tow them when they're in the way of us doing something else. Okay? If we need to be able to get a dumpster for an abatement, if we need to be able to tear down a house, those kinds of things, that's most likely when we're going to tow. But I have a feeling we're going to get voluntold that we need to tow more, so we're probably going to tow more. Emergency demolitions. As little as five to six years ago, we did not have a ton of emergency demolitions, and now we do. There is a high, you might have heard there's a homeless problem in Wichita. There are unhoused people. They take shelter in vacant, unsecured structures, and oftentimes, there will be fires that start in that, in those structures. They don't typically stay around and call emergency services, so they burn, those fires burn out of control a little bit longer than, if a fire started in one of our homes, we're going to be on top of that. We're going to, you know, fire's going to, that's not how it works with these. So the one on the left, that burned last week, the fire department, they have me on speed dial at this point. Demolitions are my program area of expertise, by the way. So we had that one down in less than 24 hours, because it literally was going to collapse and fall down on someone. High instances of squatter vagrant activity in and around, number of kids in the neighborhood as well. So we were able to do that with no notification, which ordinance and state law will allow you to do. The one on the right took us a little bit longer last year when we did that. But we'll do about 30, 35 of those a year, because of the instances of vagrant fires. Illegal dumping, the bane of my life. Here we go. Do you have illegal dumping in Bel Air? You don't have a lot of alleyways, which probably helps you.
So I'm working on one right now. There's a utility easement. There's a utility easement, and they're driving back in the Evergy easement and dumping some. So we're working with the property owners to put up some signs or something.
Are you going to, are you going to barricade it, maybe?
Working with West Star, because they, they need to prove anything that...
Lucky.
Yeah. So it's been a fun project.
So, yeah. Last year, through the illegal dumping program, we picked up 3,788 tires and 780 mattresses. So it is a growing problem. It is a growing problem. And I know, I know. I hear you all thinking, "You just keep that over there in Wichita. Don't let that bleed over here into Bel Air. We'll do the best we can." All right. So those are, those are pictures and illustrations. I've also put in a quick fact for you that shows a little bit of our activity and kind of where we spend our money, our resolutions, how we, how we resolve things in terms of time. If you're a nerd like me, I kind of like this kind of stuff, this quick facts. But again, it's just to build credibility, to let you know that we do it in spades. What I want to talk to you, though, is how we do it on a couple of particular case types that I think would be very relevant for Bel Air, based on our conversations with Paula. Before I do that, though, I want to just draw your attention to one document. It looks like this. It was a memo from Tom Stoltz, who was the director at the time. So it looks like this. It's complaint triage protocols. You should have a copy of that. Because you might look at all of this, and you might say, "Kaylin, how on earth do you decide what to do first? How, how do you know how long you're going to give someone? How do you know what is your first priority? How do you know how to approach this kind of work?" And that's very valid questions. It's very good questions to ask. So when Mr. Stoltz, and this is before my time, I've been doing this since almost seven years now. Mr. Stoltz, when he was the director of MABCD, it was right after OCI, right after the merger. You'll hear us talk about the merger when MABCD was formed. He recognized that there were some, that our business was growing, right? That our, our complaint business was going, growing, and we needed to not treat everything just exactly the same, because not, not even all of those things are the same, right? So how do we, how do we approach that? And so he came up with, with help from staff and inputs, triaging. And you'll hear us talk about that a lot. Triaging, priorities, protocols. How do we, how do we plan our work? This is just an example for you to see how you can outline for your staff how you want them to approach things. You can say that, you know, a dilapidated structure is a level-one priority, but a trash cart left at a curb is a level-three. They're both nuisances, right? But are they the same nuisance? Probably not. So, something to think about, and this is just here for your example. Okay? All right. So we're going to talk a little bit about the practicalities of just case management. How do we do it? I picked a tall grass and weeds case, just to walk you through that, so you can see kind of how you do this. I won't bore you too much with it, but there's a few things you need to kind of take out of this. So a lot of what's done at local code enforcement, at the local level, is driven by state statute. And so the, the way that you write your ordinances, you're, you're working within what the state statutes allow. Maria will match me up on that, I am sure. So with tall grass and weeds, the way, the way that it's done in Wichita is, there's a blanket legal notification that's published, the first part of April, that says, basically, "Thou shalt not let your grass grow over 12 inches." Everybody. That's, that's all of you. And then when we start to receive property-specific complaints, then we issue specific property notifications, right? After that, they've got a 14-day compliance period if they do not mow it. We put it on a contractor work order. The contractor has seven days to mow it. We give them a little bit of time, whether, you know, there's, plus, we're going to, we're going to give them 30 or 40 a week to do. If it, if they mow it, it's invoiced, and if that remains unpaid, then it's assessed to the parcel. Now, if the contractor arrives and the parcel is mowed, they just report it as mowed, and we pay them a $25 reporting fee. So it works out. In other words, if the owner can get to it before we do, they're not penalized. Now, here's an important thing. The invoicing is cost plus a markup. And about two years ago, two to three years ago, time blurs when you're having fun in code enforcement, we realized that we were too affordable. We weren't charging enough. People were just letting us mow. And we're like, "We are not a lawn care service. Thank you so very much." So we increased those fees. It should be a little painful. It's supposed to be a deterrent, right? It's not, it's not a service. It's a deterrent. So invoicing for a first mow in Wichita is $230. And then this is where it gets fun. See that code enforcement humor? This is where it gets fun. Second and subsequent mows do not receive any additional notices of violation. So if we've mowed it once, and we get another complaint, we're going to put it on a work order. We're going to mow it again. We're going to bill you again, and we're going to add another $100 to the invoice. Again, not a lawn care service. Now, important distinction there. Remember, we're complaint-based, so we are not asking our inspectors to go back and look at every property that we've already mowed. There, that's, we don't, that's not realistic for us. We have to get another complaint on it, because Hope Springs Eternal, if you mow it once, that maybe the property owner, or the property manager, or the tenant, or whatever the circumstance is, will go, "Hey, they're going to come mow if I don't do it." So, now, Bel Air probably has more of this even than Wichita, or a higher percentage, I should say it that way. Anything over one acre receives perimeter mows only, because we're not going to, we don't mow ag parcels, right? We're not going to do that. We're going to mow perimeters only, knock it off the sidewalks where people get really anxious, because the grass touches them when they walk and stuff like that. And it's under a different fee structure. So last year, our average days to forced compliance was 17 days. Now, that's the, that's the quickest we've ever been able to resolve a tall grass and weeds case through a forced abatement. It's always been 21, 22, 24, 25. My staff was, was absolutely, they were on point last year, and I'm proud of them. So, tall grass and weeds. Does that kind of make sense? Do you guys have contractors that mow?
I don't know about for, I don't know about for, for compliance, but we do have contractors that mow.
Your rights of ways and things like that. Your public work staff doesn't, doesn't do some? Yeah. I figured it was a blend, probably, here, because there's so much to do. Yeah. All right. The next case is nuisance abatement. And this one, again, I figured would probably be very relevant, because everybody's got that one house that has all that junk and debris in their yard, and they just won't clean it up, because it's treasures, don't you know? It's valuable. They're going to do something with it. Or it's art. It's artistic, right? So let's walk through a neighborhood nuisance case. So when we get a complaint, we send an inspector out. If the case, if, if it's valid, we open a case. Compliance is based on the severity of the violation. Okay? So we, how big is the pile? How, how big is the pile of junk? Is it, I mean, there's some, there's some caveats there. Notice is sent certified, first class, posted on property, or published, depending on the circumstances, because we have to look at ownership. Is it in-state, out-of-state? Are they dead? Are they alive? Are they incarcerated? Can we serve them? Where are they? The options to resolve a nuisance for us, we can abate, we can mow, we can tow, we can cut it and trim it. We can issue a UCC and refer them to environmental court. We can refer to our code enforcement liaison program, and just kind of put a pin in that, because I'll come back to that. Then after forced action, it's invoiced, and if it's unpaid, it's assessed. Now, that sounds easy if you say it fast. But then, you look at the details of abatements. So we had so many abatements coming our way, and, and varying levels of difficulty and risk, that we had to establish triaging for abatements. So currently, we operate under this structure. We have regular abatements, which are, the properties are not fenced. There's low risk to staff and contractors. We can bid it, assign it to a contractor, and just say, "Go clean this one up." We might have an inspector there with them. We might not. It, it's low risk, not, not a lot of danger. Enforced abatements are usually vacant properties, but they may have squatters or other interference. Somebody that comes and says, "Hey, stop. I don't want you to do that," but they don't have any legal right to be there. They may have no trespassing signage. We'll usually need police assistance for those, but once we get police there and kind of get that cleared away, we're good to go. And then our most complex abatements require administrative search warrants. Those are dangerous for staff and contractors. Sometimes, we've been threatened by various incendiary people. We can get a district search, a district court judge to issue an administrative search warrant. You have 10 days to execute that from the time that it's signed. It used to be 72 hours, and we are very grateful that now it's 10 days, because you have to have it bid. You have to have everything lined up with your contractors. You've got to have police available to do it, because this will always, always, always require police presence, because we're not going to do it for safety reasons. So it's just a never-ending, our, our abatement queue, you know, you just, it's just like Jenga. You just, you take a few out, you put a few in. This one becomes administrative. This one becomes not, you know, you just, it's just, it just flows all the time. It's just, it just churns and flows all the time. So, now, I want to stop here and talk just a little bit about code enforcement liaison, what that is. So several years ago, before I started, I wish I could claim this, our department added a couple of different social workers on staff in neighborhood inspection, because there are property owners who simply do not have the mental capacity, the physical capacity, financial capacity to help themselves. So our, my, God bless these ladies. God bless them. Their sole mission is to align resources and property owners to resolve problems. And resources may be volunteers. They've got like 125 different volunteer groups that they pull from. It could be a few little bit of materials and equipment. It could be dumpsters. It could be just all sorts of things that they can do. It's very effective at resolving relatively minor property infractions. And some minor... and some minor housing violations. So, that was a stroke of brilliance. Now, the original intent of that was to alleviate burden on environmental courts. I would offer you some caution of relying too heavily on environmental court to resolve property-related issues. And that's on one of my other slides, but I'm going to go ahead and talk about it now. Because court is a very time-consuming process. It is not always guaranteed that the property issues will be resolved at the end of it. Let's say you have a, let's take an excessive collector house, right? You take them to court. The judge says, how do you plead? I'm guilty. Okay, you're guilty. I'm going to fine you $100 in court costs. Okay. Guess what? Property still looks just exactly like it did. That hasn't done one thing, to clean it up. Now, one way that court can be effective is probation. That's a tool that judges can use, and Maria will guide you through that better than I ever would. I'm not an attorney. But if judges put property owners on probation and say, okay, you've got to make some progress. You know, I'm going to fine you this unless you come back in 30, 60, 90 days and show me that you've got it cleaned up, then I'll waive the fines. So, probation is oftentimes as effective as any other type of sentencing. Maria, you want to? Yeah, nod, not any, okay, good, thank you. Don't want to get too out on a limb on court there. So, I want to just share just a couple of other slides, and then I want to just talk. I want you to pepper me with questions. We haven't covered by any means, I could bore you within a half an inch of your life on code enforcement, because I love it, and I will never, ever work myself out of a job in Wichita. That will never happen, ever, 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 ever. So, all right. Mentioned this, state statutes drive certain aspects of code enforcement. I mean, there's some boundaries there, just for grins. If you haven't read the state statutes that affect local municipalities, they're a good read to get you to sleep. But when you're reading them for specifics, something like this, it's a good read. So, keep in mind, too, that local ordinances, you can inadvertently contain, put things in there that may or may not actually be okay or legal to do. For example, I'll pick on right-of-entry. You can put in a local ordinance that you have the right to enter property and see what's going on. And you probably want to put a caveat on there, that as long as you have a warrant or permission, because then it's legal. But you can't just go onto people's property or in their home, and there's some rules about that. So, we spend a lot of time training our inspectors on what they can and cannot do in terms of legal visibility, where they can take pictures from, what they can do on properties. It's more complex for us than it is for you right now, but you might as well start the way you want to go. So, it might be also useful, I looked at your local ordinances. Just to clarify your thinking, as you're thinking about this, it might be helpful for you to think about those in kind of segments. And by that, I mean, you know, premise conditions versus structures, because you don't resolve them in the same way. And residential versus commercial, very different. An inoperable vehicle is different on a residential lot than stored near a place that works on cars, right? So, that's a very simplistic example, but you see what I'm talking about. You've got to think about the zoning, you've got to sort of bifurcate that a little bit. And then, public property versus private property. I think in one of the code sections, you've got that you can remove vehicles in the street and that are blocking, I forget the exact words, but if you're handling those as a nuisance, you can't assess yourself, because they're on public property. So, in Wichita, we would say, okay, police, this one's yours. So, that might be under a traffic ordinance versus a nuisance code, because it's in the street. So, you might want to kind of put some separation in there instead of trying to handle everything in one single code. Okay. You might want to check your code. So, on how that's done. The other thing, I thought it was odd, I may have overlooked it. I didn't see anything to do with minimum housing. Like, did I see a minimum housing code in there anywhere? Okay, okay. So, and I'll go on, let me just go on a little bit more. So, Paula asked me, she said, what do you think, like, because we've seen what our changes have been in five years. I mean, if you'd have told me five years ago that I'd need to tear down 35 houses because we had that many squatter fires, I would have said, no, no, we don't need to do that. I was wrong. If you'd have told me even three years ago, that I wouldn't even know as much, excuse me, about cleaning up homeless encampments as I do, on private property, I would have also said, I don't think that's going to happen, and I would have been wrong. So, even now, we're rerolling, we're rerolling these protocols, because we don't have those provisions in here. We haven't said, this is how we're going to handle them. This is the timeframe that we're going to address them in. So, just because you've got a big, robust system that does all kinds of complaints, don't everything that you're not going to be just, you're going to be responding and adapting to what your community changes are. So, future predictions. Your proximity to Wichita, you're going to be subject to creep. It's creeping, it's creeping, it's creeping toward you. The other thing, we were talking with Paula last week a bit, and high percentage of rental properties here. And that's so cool when they're new and well-maintained and locally owned. And it's so not fun when they are aging, and they have deferred maintenance, and they're not locally owned, and they have out-of-state owners, and you don't have anybody in charge of them, and things are just running amok. The other thing I would just observe, mixed-use areas, you know, where you've got residential and either retail or commercial or industrial, where they're butted right up against one another, can bring on a whole different set of complaints. You'll get things like noise, and lighting, and smell, and dust, and how do you address those? Well, you really can't, but citizens don't know that. You're going to get those complaints anyway. So, just be thinking about that, because you're going to have, your development areas are going to put you in that position, just because of where you've got to grow in Bel Air, right? So, it's a little bit about code enforcement from the perspective of people who just literally live it, eat it, sleep it, and breathe it. And I'm so glad that you all do not. I'm so happy that this is a tiny little piece of what you have to consider here in our town. Now, ask me some questions, please. I'd love to answer them.
I have one. You mentioned heating and air conditioning complaints. Is that landlord-tenant-type complaints, or?
So, in a way, yes. And in Wichita, we have a minimum housing code. Because it's two-pronged, I'll answer that. So, the minimum housing code does not require that a unit has air conditioning, but if it has it, it has to work. Isn't that a strange way to write a code? Very strange.
I actually like that. If I don't mind hot weather, and I don't want an air conditioner, and it doesn't work, I don't care about fixing it, that's fine.
So, if it's there, if there is an air conditioner there, it has to work. Now, if it's a tenant landlord situation, then it is the landlord's responsibility to repair it. But the tenant has to let them in to do it.
Okay, so, to the minimum housing thing, I bring this up because I know of a lady this winter who didn't have heating going into the winter. And it was very, very cold, she was trying to heat her house with her oven. Okay.
Did it burn?
What?
Did it burn?
No.
Okay, good.
They did finally come fix the heater. It was her son finally did it, but he'd been delaying it for months. So, what would Wichita do about a situation like that?
Owner occupied or rental?
Owner occupied.
So, that's where we're going to use our code enforcement liaison. We're going to try to get that person hooked up with some grant funding or another resource to get, because you can't take, there's a clear code violation, right? No heat, because you have to have heat. But if it's an owner, you can't take them to court, you can't force them to fix it. So, we've approached that, let's get them the resources that they need to do it, if they'll let us help them.
So, for example, you might have called a heating and electric company, and they'd have come out and looked at it and said, all it needs is this little part, and we'll do it for free?
Actually, we would have probably had her get the bids, have her do the contracting, have her reach out and get the contractor information for us, because that means then that the owner has some skin in the game, and we would help pay for it.
Okay, this one got a little weirder, but, because she actually was waiting for her son to do it, and he wasn't reacting. So, if somebody could have convinced her to do it on her own, it would have been taken care of. But she was.
And that's where we had that little bit of materials and equipment money for, and we'll use them on life safety issues like that, so that we could have funded that if it was something simple. Now, if it was bigger than that, the weatherization grants and some of the housing and community resources grants would have probably kicked in. I'm guessing fixed income, most likely?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I don't know that she couldn't afford to do it, it just wasn't getting done.
So, most of our code enforcement liaison activities, there's an income, they're going to vet for income and ownership before they jump off into that, to prevent abuse of that, if it's someone who has the means to do it and just isn't doing it, wants somebody else to do it for them, that kind of thing. I hope that helped. Housing issues are complex, they are. Landlord-tenant issues are also complex.
I think in this case, what would have helped was your wonderful ladies that go out and do counseling might have succeeded way better than any other solution.
That, we, as I said, bless them, bless their hearts. They do things that, they resolved over 350 cases for us last year that we would have probably considered unresolvable, are very difficult to resolve, just from sheer force of will. They're two little bulldogs. They get it done.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So, in Bel Air, obviously, we have a lot of home construction going on. So, in Wichita, how do you guys deal with, and we've had this happen, where there's homes being built, and there's trash blowing everywhere? And it's pretty obvious, it's the contractors that are building the homes, and either they're just being negligent about it, or it's flying out of their dumpsters, whatever. Is that generally handled? Obviously, all those are folks that pulled permits, and they're building the house. Do you tend to use, handle that with, obviously, the best thing to do is get them to take care of their trash, and you don't have to deal with it again. But if it continues to be an issue, how have you seen that resolved?
So, we would turn that over to the building and trades side of our house. They have more teeth to wield on a construction site than we do.
Yep.
Because contractors generally don't want to get on their bad side, or on their naughty list. I'll just be honest. So.
They want it to be easier to do business, and not doing their job. So, that's probably the most effective. I was just kind of curious how.
Because you guys do your own building inspections still, right? Your residential building inspections, you've got a building inspector?
Yeah.
It goes through the county now.
So, a word.
We've had to tell contractors to clean up messes like that before.
Yeah, just get a dumpster and put a bungee cord on it. It's not, that is not hard. But we get the same complaints, we get blowing trash complaints. I had one, let me think, this one came through a commissioner, a county commissioner. And this fellow was hot. Now, I mean, he was hot, and he was going to get somebody to come out there today, and it's in the middle of a field, in absolutely nowhere. And he was going to call cake, and we were all going to come out there and have a meeting, and we were going to get that resolved, and we did not do that. So, that's just not how that works, sir. So, anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, you've touched on it a little bit with these future issues. With your code enforcement eyes, and being a Bel Air resident, we're working on the, you know, public camping ordinance and that sort of thing. Do you see anything jumping out to you that might be a top priority that you see with your background in Bel Air that we should maybe tackle first?
With regards to public camping?
No, we're already working on that, but just, you know, anything else that you see as an issue or as a vulnerability, as things creep north?
You know, one of the things that will drive you a little nuts is illegal home businesses. So, I would look to see how your zoning is structured for those. Those are very, very difficult to prove and prosecute. And so, the more clear you can make your guidelines for those, the more teeth you can give your enforcement officers with that. People are going to be looking for ways to make money, right? So, they're going to be fixing cars, they're going to be repairing lawn mowers, they're going to be trying to do nail salons out of their house, they're going to do things that generate traffic and extra trash, and possibly motor oils and spills, and you name it, or babysit, unlicensed babysitting, and all of those things. That is very difficult in Wichita. And so, the more you can do to just be ready to address that in a smaller locale, I think the better off you would be. Watch your vulnerable areas for homeless encampments. Because if people figure out that you don't have a lot of ways to address that in a smaller community, that it would be easier for them to panhandle and camp, then they're going to migrate here. I wish it wasn't, but it is. So, keep your eye on the prize there. Don't let it get going.
I have a question, I guess. It's a situation, and I guess I'm just curious, how universal are these types of codes, like across the country, in various areas? Are they similar, do you think? They are?
They are.
Okay, so, then I'm going to give you an example, which I think is, so, there is an apartment, so, it's a renter, that things go in, but nothing ever comes out, including the tenant. So, everything is delivered, and it all stays inside. So, without looking in the window, but you know, it's got to be nasty in there. So, what would be the route? Would you just call code enforcement and say, there is a tenant in here that they never leave their apartment, and they've been in there for years?
You don't have much recourse with that.
Really?
Really.
Okay.
Because, and I will tell you that we've tried, we've run at this a number of ways, because there's a constitutional right to protect against illegal search and seizure. So, you don't have a probable cause to even obtain a warrant to look. And even if you did, and you got in there, and it was every bit as bad as what you thought, there's no recourse. So, even in Wichita, we do not do interior abatements. Because how on earth would we ever know or determine what are valuable treasures versus trash? Because one thing I've learned from my beautiful, lovely code enforcement ladies is that one of the most difficult things with a hoarder, or a recluse even, they do not want help. They don't want people to see what they have.
Oh, true.
They don't, they're not going to open up and welcome you in. They're not going to let you take anything out. It's virtually impossible for them to get rid of anything. And that's what creates the problems. So, it's a mental illness that leads to horrible conditions.
So, you can't even talk to a social group, or just?
So, there's, what we will do in those instances is we will partner with adult protective services and have them sometimes do welfare checks and investigate in that way. If there's, well, I'll just be blunt, if there's a funky smell, and we think somebody's dead, we'll have police do a welfare check, police or fire. We had a situation. We had a situation just within the last month where we had a, a hoarder property and the owner just poof vanished about two years ago. And nobody has heard or seen anything from her, no, nothing. I mean, nothing. Cadaver dogs, nothing could find anything. So, we secured the property and it will just sit there until it goes for a tax sale. There's no recourse other than that.
Okay.
Welfare check by the police?
Yeah. But even again, you can't abate on the interior. You can just make sure nobody's in peril.
Right, okay.
I know, it's not a, not a great answer, but it is.
That situation they're in, and I thought maybe there was something, but.
There's no magic bullet on that one. And trust me, if there was, we would have been put to the fire to do it because.
I mean, I think it's a good point though, because there is a public health concern there. I, I've seen and heard of instances where somebody gets trapped because something fell on them.
Oh, yeah.
Now, obviously, a welfare check would help, help with that, but I think it's a fair question.
If, for exterior conditions where it spills out into the yard or on the porch or anything, that's, you've got that. You've got, you can do that now. But you got to have money and contractors and a process. And did I mention money?
So. Kayla, can you elaborate a little bit on that? That was going to be my question. Been in the finance office for some times and we have this line in our budget that says, uh, code enforcement compliance expenses and it's relatively small. So, does your priorities determine how much you're going to budget for these expenses? It's a little different with a big organization because you might have some revenue. City of Bel Air doesn't have revenue to, basically, if you look at a cycle, so just to bring everybody together, we, we do a lot with special assessments. So, we'll come, we'll specially assess for road streets, but we know we're going to get repaid or the city's not getting repaid. When we assess for tearing down a building, we know there might not be payment for a few years or ever because that property owner might not pay it. So, all this has to be a budgeted expense and kind of go through, you mentioned two hundred and thirty dollars for mowing. I imagine the contractor does it for quite a bit less, but that's still forty, fifty, sixty dollars that we'll have to pay to have that mowed without the guarantee of getting a revenue. So, kind of expand on your expenses and how you prioritize, how you budget for those.
So, the, the city has seen fit to more than double our operating budget over the last five years. We were not well-funded to do what we were being asked to do. And part of it was this very reason, because when we had these priority ones, these emergency demolitions, these, you know, administrative abatements, which are always more expensive because the piles are bigger, that kind of thing. So, and I'm going to, I'm going to back up and kind of answer that with a, another observation. So, we don't generate revenue either and we rarely recoup assessments, at least certainly not in the same fiscal year. So, you have to know going into it, you're going to front the expense for every contractor that you use and we just anticipate that. So, the illegal dumping program is funded from the landfill post-closure fund. So, it's a public works and utilities fund that funds that and we just manage it. And then the M A B C D revenue fund will fund twenty percent of our operations, but that also includes part of our staff. So, the only actual operating expense we get from M A B, M A B C D fund is about seventy thousand dollars for demolition. Well, that was spent two weeks ago. I mean, I had that, that was gone in February. So, everything else is general fund. So, they have carved that out of the general fund over the years and allocated it to contractuals and commodities for us. So, that's the line item where it stays. And we've just gone back and asked, we've said, "Here's what we've done. Here's how far it can get us in the year. We're going to have to stop. We can continue if you'll allocate more funding." And every year, they, they have done that. That's not a nuts and bolts answer, but it kind of tells you that it is a general fund expense. It's going to be a drag against your general fund any way you go about it, I would imagine. The only, we do have grant funding for formal condemnations. We have some C D B G money for formal condemnations, but it doesn't cover any of this other kinds of stuff that I've shared with you today. Yes, sir?
Oh, any idea on what percentage of assessments you recover?
I don't. And I, and this is a crazy thing. I've asked that, but we, when the county sends assessments back into the, into the city, they send it in a lump and I, I can't get my little grubby hands on the percentages. So, I don't know. I literally do not know. I've been trying to figure that out myself. So, not a lot, not a lot. Now, we will, some people will actually pay. I mean, the tall grass and weeds are most likely to get paid because they're the smallest, they're the smallest expense that we have. We're less like, and board ups are less expensive too. But the bigger ones, the abatements, the demos, that kind of thing, hardly ever, hardly, hardly ever. Unless we've got fire insurance proceeds and then we'll, we'll ding those, but.
Yes, anything else we need to discuss here?
Give them a little hint of some of the unique cases that you're starting to see that are really new and how you handle the scoop attacks and the human, all the fun.
Oh, yes. Yeah. So, not long ago, we had a complaint that there was a house that had a few tires. Okay, so we took a look. And what was happening was we were starting to see tires that were showing up around dumpsters in and around this house out in the neighborhood. And so, we thought, huh, well, let's check that out. Well, eighteen hundred tires later on a residential lot, to the tune of eleven thousand, seven hundred and something dollars, we had the tire problem taken care of. Now, that is not how we would typically like to do that, but we decided it was more efficient than to get eighteen hundred tires taken care of than to find them three at a time in the neighborhood around the dumpsters at the churches and the QuickTrip and the convenience stores and the wheres. Now, this is an example of an unlicensed trash hauler who was advertising, "I'll haul your tires. Give me three dollars a tire, two dollars a tire, whatever," but not disposing them properly. Eighteen hundred tires. That's an astonishing lot of tires to have on a residential lot. So, that's just recent. One of the other things that we've had to figure out and we don't have a good solution for yet, but we're working on it. We do see a fair amount of encampment activity. And one of the things that we have learned is that people who are illegally camping will use just about any vessel that you can imagine as a restroom. And they will leave it when they leave. And that is an environmental issue that is very, very expensive to deal with and we do not have a good solution. A single emergency response from a company in Wichita to come and encapsulate, let's just say, a cooler. Right? A cooler or a five gallon bucket or a cardboard box or whatever, you fill in the blank there, would be between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars to dispose of on one property. Now, that will bust a budget quicker than anything you'll ever see. So, we leave it because we, we simply can't bear that expense and we don't have an alternative figured out yet. But we're working on it. We just don't have a solution, right? Let me think of another good one. Oh. We had a circumstance, we have a large commercial structure in the middle part of Wichita. We've been working with the owner to try to keep it secured because the vagrants and vandals have done thousands and thousands of dollars worth of damage in it. They've stripped copper, they've cut wiring. I mean, it is just unbelievable how quickly they can do that. So, what we prefer to do in that instance is get the, our contractor, we have a really good contractor that does commercial board ups. And so, we've gotten them in contact with the owner, let them work together. We don't need to be a middleman. We don't want to upcharge them. Just go get it secured. Save your building, dude. You go. So, last Friday, our contractor, the one we use a lot, is working on behalf of the owner and they're securing an annex building. The vagrants had already gotten back in it. They cleared the bill. It's not very big, so they didn't need police to do it and it wasn't high risk. So, the contractors, they've done this a lot. They know what they're doing. They cleared the building. And then there were grates on either side of it that led to kind of some underground drop downs, that kind of thing. And the owner wanted those secured as well to prevent any, just any access to the building. So, they get it welded shut. They get the other one welded shut. They're getting ready to go and they hear this, "Hey, hey." Okay? And a little fellow had crawled through a heating and air conditioning vent that was not that, I mean, there's no, I couldn't have gotten my leg in it. And he was in the ductwork under the building. So, he comes, he gets to where he can see the contractors and he says, "I'm, I'm not cutting copper. I'm not stealing copper. I'm not doing any of that." Okay, well, whatever you say. So, then they couldn't get their weld undone. They did a very good job on the weld. So, he had to sit and contemplate his life choices and think about what he had done while the fire department mobilized and brought their cutting tools to extract him from this tiny little opening. And the police arrested him on the spot. The owner's going to press charges for trespassing and vandalism. And that was a first, but probably won't be the last. So, now in other large commercial structures, we have seen instances of vandalism where there are markings on the wall where they're spray painted. No copper in here, where they mark where they've already stolen everything out. No copper in here, everything gone, nothing left. They'll spray it on, right? Not, not an ideal situation. So, we've partnered with the fire department now for these kinds of structures, these big commercial structures, because they're at the most risk, right? They're the ones that have to go in if they start a fire, if there's a medical emergency, somebody ODs or whatever they do in there. So, we've got a, there's a marking system that we've started to use that will identify what is going on in there. So, that if the fire department has to respond, they'll know there's collapsing stairs or there's doors welded shut and things like that. So, we're doing what we can to try to keep our emergency personnel partners safe. And that's all just since the first of the year. Any other questions for me?
No, I just, thank you for the information. I appreciate it. It's very helpful and, and that's kind of what we're driving towards the lane of updating a lot of codes and a lot of, you know, not just building codes, but enforcement codes. And, you know, as these cases, I, I think I've been here nine years. We've dealt with one bad one in nine years. So, as these cases come before us, now we have a little background information that we can draw on and, and hear from.
I'm happy to consult.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate your help and, and that's kind of the.
Like I said, I live here. Go get them, Tigers. Go get after them.
We appreciate your time and thank you for the information. And if you do see issues, please let him know. Okay, very good. Next thing on the agenda is credit card fees and update. Where are we on the credit card fees?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to make it as quick as possible. As you remember, on February fourth, council meeting, we discussed kind of the credit card fees that are applied to transactions. On January, we kind of got real lucky. We rolled out this new Tyler system at the same year that the law changed for general businesses to collect surcharges on credit cards. So, there was a lot of conversation back and forth. At the end, we asked City Legal Maria to kind of research a little bit some of our questions, get with Tyler's attorneys, which we did on February fourteenth and again on February fourth. So, right, I just want to get, have Maria give her summary of this and hopefully we can move forward soon.
Thank you. Since February fourth, yes, there was a meeting organized. I've attended three meetings since then with Tyler Technology staff, one especially with their, an attorney for Tyler Technology. It was very informative for me. There are different types of transactions involved with this payment system, different type of payment modules. When speaking with the attorney for Tyler Technology, there was a discussion regarding specific contract requirements and looking at state statute for Kansas, looking at federal law, having those discussions led to more questions. So, she is going to gather information. She's going to provide that to us. I would like counsel to know that when it comes down to these discussions about the transactions and the payment modules, it also involves a discussion about the software, the abilities, also the limitations. When you take that into account and we look at state statute or looking at legis, I'm sorry, I'm looking at legislative history, using that to ask more questions of Tyler Technology. When looking at federal law, there's also a discussion about interchange rates. So, it, there's multiple layers here for this project, wanting to give the council the best options. So, and all the information you need to make the best decision. The other thing that I would mention is Tyler Technology has also provided some diagrams, some images on the process for their software, for the customer. That has been helpful as well. I'm, I'm hoping to have more answers for you, but at least that's a little bit of a trail, so to speak, of what's been done so far since your meeting on February fourth. And if you have questions.
I'm beginning to feel like we're getting too far in the weeds with this thing. As I understand federal law, we can't charge fees for debit cards. And we have a system we can charge fees for credit cards. And I've heard somebody, I think I've suggested myself, I heard somebody else has made suggestion that we just post on our system that we do not accept credit debit cards. And if you process a debit card and you get charged a fee, that's on you because you did it knowing that we don't accept debit cards. And just leave it at that. I, I think, I, I just, I hate the, seeing us spinning lots of calories on this issue. It just feels like that's not very productive for us. So, it's just, just an idea. Of course, anybody else? I know I kind of threw a gauntlet out there, but anybody else have any comments or just?
I agree. We can get it fixed. Just let them know. Don't use that. Yep, I like that.
Yeah, when I saw what we, what fees were and I compared it to like replacing the equipment in Eagle Lake Park, we, we can't keep absorbing those fees. And if you feel like legally we can't do it even with a notice like that, then I think we do need to reevaluate what, what we're taking in general that's driving up our fees. This is my take on it.
Yeah, I think one of my comments was is when you use a debit card, it runs as a credit card unless you're asked a PIN number. If our system, if we post that we don't accept debit cards and a person is not able to input a PIN, then I don't know why we have any exposure at all. It's run as a credit card. Our system can't recognize the difference. We've said, "You can't use a debit card. If you do, it will run as a credit card." You can't, you can't enter a PIN in our system. So, I don't know. I agree. I think we're spinning our wheels on it.
This, this is helpful information for me. I do appreciate it. Please note that I'm kind of trying to catch up pretty quickly on this one here. But when I did meet with counsel, I'm sorry, have a meeting where counsel is present, she is gathering some additional information to help because depending upon which route you go, for example, for example, the one that you're describing, it might involve some tweaks to the contract depending upon the payment module. I don't want to say yes or no either way because I, I don't know the definite answer to that, but that is some information she's gathering.
Well, I'd like to see us bring that one to ground because it's, I think it's been out there for a month or two and it's just, it seems like. it, it seems like in the big picture things, this is kind of a small potatoes issue that we should just make a decision and go on. You know? I don't, I don't want us holding, I don't want this holding us up on getting this software implemented and I don't want, as we've talked before, I don't want workarounds to the software. Okay? Anything else to discuss on the credit card fee issue? If not, we need to move an item that's not on the agenda. But, uh, there's, um, an issue dealing with, uh, annexation updates. Uh, county has been sending Ted some emails that, uh, haven't been so pleasant for him. So I'll let him talk to us about it.
Everybody kind of remembers this and I'll need Maria's, uh, a little bit, um, legal advice on some of this, but, uh, the county came to us early last year saying we share some roads. Will you annex these roads? Um, we'll provide, um, in exchange for that, we'll do a mill and overlay, which should preserve it for seven to 10 years. So we wouldn't have to touch it again for seven to 10 years. However, once you annex something that, it's there forever. Um, they, uh, and I'll let Maria talk about the type of annexation that went on. Which is a little different than what we're used to. Um, but the problem we're having right now is at the end of every year, you're supposed to accept your boundaries. Uh, we've talked about that as well. So what happens is when the county accepts their new boundaries, they don't include the annexed, the annexated part, and we don't accept the new boundaries, then that road becomes empty, I guess, would you say? Nonexistent, uh, to the G, GIS system. So that's a lot of their, our, our struggle staff wise is, you know, who owns this road? How do we work? So I think the, the council at the time asked, uh, for Maria and Jim, uh, Maria to uh, draft an agreement that would be, uh, more of a cost share maintenance, uh, style, um, uh, agreement with the county, uh, which we did, we presented and, um, I, I think the, the answer was no. Um, and so here we are right now. Um, I think the two important elements we kind of, and I hope staff, and I know, uh, Lynn Parker came before us and talked a little bit, is what's our leverage? What do we have? Um, and I think Maria can talk on that. And what should the next steps be? So that, that's my summary, Jim. I, you could, you've, you've dealt a lot with it too, so you can add your elements, but that's the basic summary of what's going on.
Well, that's a pretty good summary. It's, uh, we did submit a draft proposal to, uh, County Commissioner Pete Meister, and, uh, he basically came back and said, uh, they're not interested in that type of agreement and, um, and so he, you know, we, that just leaves us where we are. Uh, so we need to decide what is our next step. And, um, so we'd met here, I don't know, I guess it was yesterday. Um, Ted and Maria and I, and I asked Maria to look into a couple of things. So I'm anxious to hear what she learned since then. Uh, how much she's able to find out in that short period of time, but I'm sure she learned some things, so.
Well, I, I looked at the statute first of all, and, uh, the statute is clear. I shared this with council in December and I think, I think again in January, when we had a very brief conversation about it. Uh, according to the statute, it is, as it is written today, the Board of County Commissioners may notify the city of the existence of the right of way, which has not become part of the city by annexation, but it does have a common boundary with the city. And with that notification shall include a legal description and a map identifying the location of the highway. The governing body of the city shall then in return certify by ordinance that that certification is correct and declare the highway or portion of it where the city boundary abouts the opposing highway annexed to the city. So in this specific situation, yes, uh, the Cedric County did on October 24th, 23rd of last year. They gave us note, they made the resolution, they provided the resolution to us regarding the annexation. Per the statute, what are our, uh, responses? What can we do? Well, in the statute, it makes it very clear that the governing body of the city of Bel Air shall certify, shall certify by ordinance. Uh, what's the option? It is to comply per statute. Uh, unfortunately, I looked back, as Mayor Benage said, anything in legislative history to suggest that there is another option, I cannot locate another option in the legislative history. It appears as though this is a uniform, uh, statute that the tru-, cities are treated the same. The legislature put a lot of effort into making this uniform, providing all of these cities and counties some type of a roadmap on how to handle annexation issues. In this specific, uh, statute, Mayor Benage also asked, well, what about potential Attorney General opinions? Is there anything to help provide guidance in that respect? I went back and looked at, uh, Attorney General opinions and there were probably a little about eight of them that I could find. But they were not involving the issue at hand, a city not wanting to proceed with an annexation uh, from the county. In fact, I found a few, uh, Attorney General opinions where there were some questions because perhaps not all of the elements were met. For example, maybe the land did not share a common boundary with the city, but that's not an element in this specific case. Uh, so unfortunately I don't have helpful information for the governing bodies such as legislative history or Attorney General opinions. All I have is the statute. Uh, the statute which, uh, has not been changed as far as subsection E, which is the authority the Cedric County took upon themselves to use in this specific annexation. I will also mention to council that if the governing body chooses not to certify by ordinance, which is required by statute, then there is the possibility that if the Cedric County wanted to, that they could proceed to some type of, of mandamus, some type of suit. If so, the, um, then a court would ultimately make that decision and the relief would be statutory compliance uh, for Bel Air to comply by certifying the boundary with an ordinance. I, I hope that helps Mayor Benage with the information.
Yeah, I appreciate you're looking into those things and finding out what was out there. So we know, because we, we, we didn't know. Um, and I didn't necessarily expect you to find anything, but I wanted to see what you know. Um, so, um, one of the things that in my mind, that this, this comes to is fairness and equity, which is more of a common law type of a issue than a statutory law. Uh, and so my, one of my thoughts was, and it's just a thought, it's not saying we need to do this, is maybe we should ask the Attorney General for an opinion on fairness and equity of shared maintenance because as, as one of the council members has said before, um, this looks like it just a ploy to get, for the county to get out of maintaining these roads, of paying for the maintenance of these roads. And in, in one way, it sounds like that, okay? I, I understand the reason for the statutes. I've, I've actually talked with Carolyn McGinn some time ago about these issues. Uh, she was one of those, the, the people that was the, um, sponsor of this statute. Because she saw, when she was on the county commission, a huge mess in this area. And she said, we need to clean this up. And this was one of the things they did to clean this up. But I think that left some things hanging and that's the maintenance of it, the future maintenance of these, these type of roads. So I, I don't know if it makes sense to go and ask Attorney General for an opinion on the fairness and equity. I think it could be done concurrently to, uh, approve in the annexation so that we uh, at least, uh, satisfy the, the, uh, anxiety there at the county, at the county level. But I think we, it might not hurt to let them, let the Attorney General weigh in on fairness and equity. But I don't know if, if you want to go that route and if you do or, or don't, that's, that's really up to you. I'm not going to make that call. I just, just throwing an idea out there, so.
Well, it sure wouldn't hurt to get an opinion. I don't think that's an issue, is it? Just to get an opinion. And then what about other cities? How do they deal with this? Do they all acquies-, acquiesce and just cover all the expenses?
In this, in this last round of 2024, it appears as though there were 12 to 13 cities in the same situation as Bel Air. Uh, from what I understand, they have all certified via ordinance as of today. And there were no questions or opposition posed by those cities.
Uh, one of the, um, there were a couple of cities that were a little bit slow. And, and we could only guess as to why. Uh, but another angle from a political perspective is we could go to those other cities and say, hey, are, are you concerned about this issue as well? To be fair about the county, they, in, 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 I want to make sure that this is clear. They've done a fairly good job at keeping us well on shared maintenance. They've paid for, uh, the work on 53rd. They paid for, uh, uh, the half a million dollars on Woodlong. So they've done some good things there, but it is not, um, it's, it's not, there's not a process in place for doing it. It's when do, when do thee think they should do something? You know, we go ask them to do something, they'll maybe do it, maybe not. I'm not saying that they've never turned us down, but they may do it, maybe not. But there's not a process that says you will do this. And of course, you know, they're just like us, are a governing body that's elected by the people and they change hands all the time. And we just had news, two news county commissioners elected last November. I mean, we have three city council members up for election this year. Uh, you know, that's, so that's a rotating issue. That's just the nature of elected office. And, um, so it seems to me it would be wiser and better for all concerned if we had a process in place for doing that. But I'm not getting any, uh, any, uh, traction with the county, uh, elected to do that. And I'm understanding the staff is the same way, but.
Yeah, and, and one thing out of the meeting Jim, Maria and I had is, um, I li-, I like tracking things and we can track, um, you know, what, how many dollars we spend on these roads. And that provides better evidence for us next time or, uh, we get a lot of other cities to start tracking, then we have even more evidence. But to Jim's point, I'm at the county is very, uh, generous when, you know, wh- when certain issues come up. But then again, we're risking them not being at some point in the future if, you know, that, that's how it works. So my two cents on this issue.
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll speak to this a little bit. Um, I certainly understand everybody's thoughts and, and worries on this. But I also look at it a little bit from the other side and I kind of compare it a little bit to, so the Aurora Park thing that we dealt with, you know, a couple of years ago. And we offered, hey, we'll cover the storms here. They've offered to help cover getting these roads updated, which some of them are probably coming up on, like Web Road, and some of them are coming up on time to have some significant needs. And that off, they didn't have to do that. Like right now, by the letter of the law, it sounds like they moved forward and they don't actually have to do that now. Will they honor that? It's, they, they would if we were to move forward. I'm not so sure though, that if we did an AG uh, opinion request and all this other stuff that they'd be as, you know, happy to oblige with any sort of funding. So that's kind of the outfall that we might have if we push the issue. But I also look at some of these roads, and I mean, especially Webb and Greenwich. I mean, our city's growing towards those boundaries at this current time. And most of the traffic that's using those roads is either in Bel Air, through Sunflower Park or passing through, obviously. So most of those roads are, are sort of our use right now. And like you've said, Mayor, they've helped on some roads that, you know, Woodlong, that's not a county road.
It was at the time.
Right, right. But I mean, it's, it's kind of, it was kind of an oddity probably that that road is still a county road, so. I don't know. I, I'm, I'm okay with, you know, moving forward. It doesn't sound like we have much of a choice anyway. And trying to work out how we can, you know, continue to educate folks on, on our side of what roads that we continue to have to maintain. And we have to do a better job, obviously of our own, to maintain our own roads. But the, this looks like, you know, unfortunately a situation that every city's, uh, dealing with, like you said, with needing to raise enough funds to maintain their infrastructure and the county is no different. Uh, but these seem less and less like county roads, right? As we continue to grow, so. I, I'm, I'm okay with resolving it with this, what they've offered, because they've refused our offer of cost share. At least we're getting some funds that we can program into our maintenance of those roads.
Which city is Rock Road on up there by 96? Is it half and half between Keachai and Bel Air or is it all Bel Air or all Keachai?
You said 254 or 96? You said 96.
I did, 254, excuse me. The, we, we've got the orange up there, which is Keachai, correct? And then?
Yeah, I think what you're seeing there is on the east side of Rock Road is Bel Air and the west side is either Keachai or County.
Well, that's why I'm asking. Uh, in, in that case, it should be, I would agree, it should not be the county because it's got a city on both sides.
Well, part of it, yes.
Yeah, it's got a city on both sides.
Part of it. Part of it's got, part of it's got, part of it's got Cedric County on the west. That green, you know, section near Cedric County.
About the part up there on the north quarter mile.
Right, okay, that is, you're right. That is a city on both sides. That has nothing to do with, I don't think that has anything to do with the ordinance.
I know it doesn't, but that's not my question. Okay, I want to know how that's divided.
I can review, um, if I zoom in really close on GIS, it has all Bel Air. So all Bel Air, all the way down Rock Road on GIS. Now, it's not pinpoint accurate. It might just be, it, it might not.
So then that begs the question, now what is the ability to get Keachai to pay half? I'm not expecting Bel Air to shove it all on the Keachai or Keachai to shove it on Bel Air, but we're, we're, how does that affect our agreements between the two cities? And the, the area south of that is still county, right?
Correct.
And it's, it's county on a mile and a half that they want us to annex. And it could be annexed into Keachai and then we're screwed with all the road while Keachai gets all the benefit. It's what I'm.
So, and Maria might know more about the annexation laws, but if Keachai choose to annex where the gray is or where the county is, then they would have to, I mean, it would be, they take half of it because the jurisdiction is, there's a difference between jurisdiction and county, which is, that, that's what part of this law is where you can force someone to do it. Um, on the Rock Roads North, um, I'll have to do some research on that. Where Keachai has abated if, who annex first or last or how that works, um, I'm not sure. And I don't know if the tool I have in front of me is accurate and splitting lines.
That's what I'm asking. Who annexes first? What happens to the other city? Is it a game of chicken? Let's see who goes first.
I, I, I don't know that question, but, um,
And then the next question, I, I know you don't have an answer to that tonight, but my next question is what kind of leverage does that give us on annexing that land? None? Some? Well, there's people living there. And if they're benefiting from a Bel Air road, should they not be paying part of the taxes for upkeep? And especially the same for Greenwich over there. It's an unincorporated area, but they want us to take the whole west side and the whole south side.
So, so the map up there is not very representative. It's just the exhibit we used. Uh, those are, um, just where we share boundaries with, which is all what we're talking about and what will be on the council meeting next week would just be the a half mile on Webb and then a little portion of Rock that wasn't annexed, um, when the original Rock Road, we annexed near Rock Road. So that, that what you're looking at is just all our shared roads, that that could be years of different annexations. So don't, I think you're accepting all those responsibilities.
I don't know who is paying for the maintenance of 53rd east of Greenwich road. Cause Bel Air's all along the south side, right?
Is that township?
I mean, this is more complex than just whether or not the county can force us into something. There's all kinds of things on down the road about what happens.
So the more, majority of the ones you're looking at up there would be all Bel Air roads, um, due to our annexation of those areas, I believe. If, if I had to give an educated guess, yes. We annex, we annex, close to it, we take the road. Yep, especially up to the county. The K, Ketchikan would be the interesting one because when you, when you annex near a, uh, a jurisdiction like Ketchikan, you have the half and half situation in state law. But the county is going to make you take the whole road if you annex near them. And, and, and a lot of what we're seeing now is the cleanup from when they didn't do that. But I think everything.
Back a few years then, 45th Street is not half and half between Wichita and Bel Air.
Yeah, that was because that was done before that law was in place.
Where we share a boundary.
Mm-hmm, right. That was one of the reasons that law was put in places, things like that happened.
Okay, so, so why can't we get Wichita to take half of it now?
Uh, I've had that discussion with a former mayor of Wichita and, uh.
Well, I'm sure they don't want to anymore than we want the whole thing to, to be equitable.
Well, and I understand that, that's.
There's a difference between if you can do it and whether or not it'd be very wise to do it. I think that's probably where the answer lies. If you want to spend the time legally fighting it. Maria, would that be a good summation of probably a lot of these issues?
I, I could definitely review it, but for this type of situation that's already been completed, that's going to be a very challenging task going back.
Yeah.
So Ted, this is just 53rd between, or Rock, sorry, Rock between 53rd and where Ketchikan starts. So that's south portion. And then that web, that web portion that's.
So this is, so Bel Air is the tan. I, when we, oh, keep it back.
Okay, can you go back again? So this section, see how it's like, like, um, light tan or the, what do you call it, brown? This was never annexed, so that's what they're cleaning up on Rock Road. It's all, it's just a small section. John, to your point, when we, and this is what I'm looking at when I say, I believe it's all Bel Air. Because there, there would be, this is Ketchikan, there would be split half, half and half. But I don't want to judge this based on the GIS.
Well, did that happen? Cause Ketchikan just annexed that recently, didn't they?
I'm not sure, I don't have the history.
Confused over how we keep getting the whole road.
So here's.
Somebody else keeps getting the better deal.
Yeah, here's the other section that, um, that Summit County would like us to take Web Road, so. These two pieces are the only two pieces that will be discussed next, um, next week. So I'm sorry for the confusing map, uh, earlier. Oh, so they, they counted, um, you see where Bel Air doesn't have any part of Web Road there. So one section is, is number two and the other section is number, they, they split in the same roadway.
We kind of did that to ourselves because we just recently annexed that.
Exactly, so that, that's kind of where sometimes the law doesn't, and that's, this is technically a cleanup, the way the county sees it.
And that was at the request of the developer.
Correct.
Who's done nothing with it. I mean, if he put a high income thing on there, I wouldn't be so worried about it, but he's done nothing with it since then.
Cause Ted, that stretch of, uh, that stretch of Rock Road is where that box culvert is failing. Or that box culvert we wanted to replace with pipe is going to occur, right?
Uh, one of them, yeah.
Yep.
One of them, yes.
So have we approached the county with any cost share on that box culvert?
Not that I know of, I believe that's the one with the KDOT grant, uh, the Rock Road one.
Well, I thought the KDOT grant was on the, on the.
I might be, I might be, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm mistaken.
Yeah, I thought that was Oliver one.
Um, I believe we'll either have an estimate or we'll have an estimate and that might be a time to.
Okay.
Talk to my good friend.
There's nothing wrong with asking Wichita for a cost share on Oliver, but, but that's a different, different situation. I know that the KDOT is helping us with that one. Yeah, okay. All right, very good. All right, well, if there's anything else to discuss on this issue, we'll, uh, we'll move on to water restrictions if, if we're done.
Just get, it's more fun as we go.
So, so we just passed our, our, um.
I'm sorry, I, I think maybe Mr. David had something.
They just wanted clarification on the, on those agreements, the mill and overlay and all that. That's, that's just a verbal, right?
It's all I've had.
What's that?
That's all I've had is a verbal, yeah, yeah.
So we just passed a little bit of a conservation plan. Um, we've been through this a little bit. I just wanted to touch base with you and kind of how I see a lot of this going. Um, overall, we want to reduce consumption by 10%. Part of staff's job, track and report it like you've seen last summer or into last summer. You'll see reports, how much we're saving, how much we're, uh, working with. Um, regulatory actions, all outdoor lawn and landscape is required to be watered once per week. Enforcement, and this is where the kind of difficult part for Bel Air, we have Tom, you know, Tom's our enforcement agent. We will go mainly on complaints. I know we've, have a newer system, but we're, we're not, we're not doing that right now. Um, so a lot of it will be Tom going out, assessing situations, issuing the warnings, the fines, uh, and the structure according to the ordinances. One thing that I've been, uh, you know, a little piece of that is exceptions. And if you read it, it's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna treat these types of exemptions very narrowly. Um, it, it says businesses that generate their core economic activity from outdoor usage, uh, shall be staged to exempt. Businesses that include, uh, golf courses, car washes, nurseries, sod suppliers and others identified by the city manager. Um, I, I believe, I haven't had a business come to me and ask for an exemption. But I believe most of the businesses in Bel Air we have are covered under the definition of what the policy currently says. Now, there is some off, uh, type issues that can occur. And when I do receive those requests, I will, uh, review those. Basically, my criteria is safety. Um, I'm not going to give someone an exemption because, uh, they're a buddy of mine and the neighbor's not a buddy of mine. That's not how that works. That's not how I'm gonna, um, pursue this. But what you will look at is, uh, we've had these types of issues when you have, um, a lot of houses going in and there's, um, a lot of mud, a lot of, uh, non, uh, no lawns. And this is a situation that happened in Bristol Hollows, uh, a few, uh, 20, 2003. Um, so that, that is something I'll be watching and making sure that erosion control measures are in place. But, uh, the best, sometimes the best thing you can have is actual, uh, a lawn on those lawns to, to prevent these issues. One area that I do need your clarification on the policy, um, is, um, under management actions in stage two. The city will implement, implement its own water measures, including operations of fountains, watering grounds and parks, filling swim pools and washing vehicles. City Hall will water only one time a week. At City Hall, all our parks will be watered one time a week. It, the policy doesn't define recreation and athletic fields. And we've talked about this in the past, but that's our soccer field right now. Um, this is, uh, other areas and I brought, I asked Brian to come because we kind of need a little bit of a direction on what to do with our recreation facilities. My criteria, a lot of it's safety. What, what happens if we have kids out there? As you know, we're going to be playing a thousand kids are going to be on that this summer. That's going to probably turn into, um, a really big mud, uh, mud field. Um, we can put some rye grass down and hope it rains in the spring and germinates. Um, but there might need to be a decision made on how we want to issue or how we want to deal with, um, parks and rec. And, uh, I just need some, I want to have the discussion with, with you before we make any, um.
What grass do you have there now? Is that Bermuda?
All our playing fields are Bermuda grass. And as we visited last year, uh, we had a significant winter kill. That's what these spots are.
Okay.
Is, is we, the weather and the drought last, last year killed these areas. Uh, we were unable to do anything with it because we had put pre-emergent down as we do every year. So we were unable to seed really anything in that until that pre-emergent let up, which it did start letting up in the fall. We have seeded a little bit of rye in some of the areas and some of it came up. And, and then the water conservation plan hit and we went to watering once a week. We were fortunate that in August, we had some rain. Uh, in late October, we had some rain, so we actually got a little bit up. But any of that, that we got up, when it gets hot and we're watering once a week, will die. It will be gone and then we'll be back to worse than this actually, because this was taken last June. If you look at that, you still have thatch in those brown areas. So there was still a cover on that ground. That right now is, is bare dirt today. Uh, and Ted also showed a couple of pictures in there that had a lot of cracks and crevices.
Yeah.
Uh, those were pictures taken in some of those areas in late July when it was dry and we were watering once a week. And that still happened. Uh, that's what I'm concerned with more than anything is, and you guys see that in your backyard. Uh, the cracks, the drier it gets, the hotter it gets, the bigger those cracks get. And there's one picture, you can see a two inch gap. And then they start falling in and you get holes that big around. So our only choice at that point is to close that field. Cause you know, a four-year-old and a five-year-old's foot is going to go right in that hole and it's going to go just like that. So it is a safety concern with us. Like I said, we were fortunate last year that we got some rains in August. And through soccer season and we were able to play, we played on dirt, but we were able to keep those fields open. Uh, so let's, let's do a rain downs, guys. Let, we, that's where we're at.
I think from my perspective, and of course, council speak for, as you think, uh, but from my perspective, you've got to focus on the safety here. So if you can't make the field safe, you need to close them. If you, if you can make them safe, then let's do that. And I, I think even, uh, releasing the water restriction to keep the field safe would be an appropriate thing to do here. Because we want to make sure that these kids do get into this, uh, soccer thing. I mean, one of the things you're hearing out in, uh, in the environment is that kids don't get out enough. They're spending too much time on, in front of, uh, screens like, uh, phones and that kind of stuff. So this is a way to get them out and get them exercising, which is much better for their health. Um, so I'm, I'm more in favor of that, but I'll let others tell them to speak their piece as well.
We've got several comments. Uh, first off, no pre-emergent this year. Second off, uh, what would it take if we put like a half inch layer of sand across the whole thing? When I was a kid, the school board came and did that at my playground and that helped tremendously. And at least when it did rain, there was something down, you weren't slopping around in the mud. And the grass took over pretty well just by itself after.
We did that, and that's one of the reasons why we were able to play soccer in the fall. We went out there with a shovel and a bucket and the tractor and did it by hand. We don't have the equipment to.
I'm talking about a dump truck dumping sand across the.
There are people around that have turf, turf top dress applicators. And I've already talked to them and the one field, we, it, it would probably take a hundred tons. Uh, dirt, sand mix is what they, is what they recommend.
Okay, and then my third thing is I really don't want to see us putting a ton of water on those fields and we're asking everybody else not to water. It's just a bad image. I mean, everybody's gone drive by and they're going to see your huge sprinklers just throwing water out all day long. And they're going to say, why can't I water my yard?
And, and we heard that last summer, a little bit. So on Tuesdays when we were watering, when we did water.
One day a week.
Don't do it during the day.
People see it at night too.
We've got, we've got about 11 acres to water. It takes us about 24 hours to water all of that and get a good cover. So we were, we were watering basically from midnight till midnight.
Restrictions, that's not pertinent to the rec center is we need to start getting our information out now about what's going to be allowed. I've had a couple of people ask me because they don't know and they don't really remember what it was.
So I just approved the March insert and it has all water stuff for the Mar, in the March utility insert. And we'll also help blast that on social media and everything else in the website.
You got the new, the, the updated, uh, conservation plan on the website yet?
It's on the website.
Cause I haven't seen a push out on that, so I don't, usually I do, but I didn't see one on that.
So it's on the website, I don't know if they pushed it. Um, we can, I can, I can have them push the email, uh, tomorrow.
We, we need to make sure everybody knows we're still in stage two. Just because we had a lot of snow over the winter, didn't change anything for the water restrictions.
Nope, still seven and a half feet low.
Yeah, about where we were. So Ted, how many complaints did you have watering, uh, along Wood Lawn from the new sidewalk?
Which.
The connection from.
Over there by Isley.
Between Isley and, uh, Resurrection, yeah.
Well, Central Park.
Back to Central Park.
Oh, uh, you know, um, a few here and there, but with the erosion control, uh, the, it wasn't as, I mean, I think they were more upset that we had to, we had to water a ditch and some of the off, um, parts is you have a little puddle at the bottom of the ditch. So that's what they were probably more upset that we didn't just, um, barely dust it, but that wouldn't germinate. And I think it really did a great job to germinate and we were in and out real, really quick. I mean, I think we dropped it back to once a week as soon as that we could. Um, so it was one of those very controlled, um, restriction, uh, or really controlled germinations.
All right, in relation to the rec, uh, fields, so if you had just enough to get it in better shape, is that like twice as much watering or four times as much watering or, you don't know?
It's on the weather, just like.
Okay.
I didn't hear that, but.
All right.
It's, it really does.
You can't keep the.
What, what do we do with all those areas that we did?
To germinate seed, you have to keep it wet.
Well, I know that, but I was wondering, yeah, once you had it, what, what'd you have to do?
We, we water every, about three times a week on, in a normal cycle.
At Bermuda, you have to water that much? I can't get my Bermuda to die.
We water three times a week and that keeps that thick.
Okay.
There is a difference between turf, like a strong turf.
This is, this is a hybrid sport.
And a lawn.
Yeah, and it gets, I mean, it gets all those feet on it and there is wear and tear on it where a guard might not have as much.
Thank you.
So, you know, that, that's, that's another question we have is what do we do with these areas? Do we just play, play dirt and top dress them and get out there with the shovel and a staff that we are pretty short on already? I mean, it's going to be very difficult at times. I mean, like I said, last summer, we were so fortunate that we had some rains when we needed them. Uh, but you can see what happened at the end of July when we didn't have rain.
Yeah, I guess I kind of see this a little bit differently because it's a rec field, so it's common use. There's lots of people using this facility every single day. And yeah, it's, it's not great that we can only water once a week on our lawns, but you know, kids aren't getting to play on their lawns because they're not nice. Like it'd be nice if we had some green space that was decent enough that we could, you know, have kids playing on it. So I kind of look at this like, a little bit like what Tom's comments were last meeting about if we're, if we're maintaining our percentage that we're saving on the whole. And if we're maintaining our agreement with the city of Wichita, why wouldn't we want to try to reestablish these fields? Otherwise they're not going to be used. I mean, it's a shame to have a rec facility and have great programming and then have to cancel it because we don't want to put a little bit of extra effort into the field. The field needs to be repaired or it just needs to be closed. And I would not like to see it closed. I think top dressing is a great idea. I think reseeding it is a good idea. And obviously you'd keep it in Bermuda so that you could reduce the amount of watering because it wouldn't require near as much watering as, as a rye or a fescue. Because you're right, a rye is just going to burn up the minute it gets hot, unless you keep it wet, like all the time.
Every day, yeah.
So, I, I mean, it, and if you're not sodding it, you know, that's, that's a very expensive endeavor. If you're seeding it or sprigging it and watering it, it's going to take a lot of water to get it to, to go. But once it does go, Bermuda loves the heat, so it does take off and it will reggerminate. Or, uh, as it gets, you know, used, it'll tend to grow a lot faster than a cool, cool season grass without very much water. So I don't know, I, I kind of just feel like if we're doing the best we can with the restrictions, we're meeting the goals. So I don't know, I, I kind of just feel like if we're doing the best we can with the restrictions, we're meeting the goals. We ought to try to take care of our asset, which is a rec facility and let people use it. Because kids aren't able to, you know, play soccer in their own yard. I get that. That's frustrating. And what's really frustrating is like fescue, which most people plant because it's cheaper. It's green when it's not hot or it's watered a lot. Once it goes dormant, you really shouldn't be on it because you're damaging the the grass, like your own lawn. If it's brown, you shouldn't really be on it. It's going to damage it. Even if you're watering it once a week, that's just keeping it alive. But they they suggest not not walking on it because it's damaging the grass. So anyway, that's just my two cents. I'd like to see our rec facility used. I think to use it too is to use it better this summer from last, we probably ought to put some effort into top dressing, seeding and watering it, and that's my thoughts.
Is there a way to restrict the area? Means we don't have to do everything, but I mean, could you get, is there some method to reduce the amount of area that has to be managed instead of like just trying to do everything? I get it, but I don't know if that's even an option, but can we do a lot of the activities with a little bit less space maybe? That's was another consideration.
And that's what we did last fall. We did not play on the soccer field because you saw the picture. Yeah. I mean, we did not play on it. Problem is, is our fields are not fenced. So we might not, we might be able to not program those areas. You cannot keep people off of.
Oh, that's true.
You cannot, I mean, without putting fences up around the whole place and locking it off. And people are still going to find their way in.
Yeah, I'm not as concerned. I mean, I don't want people on there and getting hurt, but I'm not concerned about people who go and do that kind of stuff. Even though it's not part of the program, if you're able to manage with less fields and still have just as robust of a program as you normally do.
And and it worked, it worked all right in the fall. It wasn't ideal, but.
Right.
We we were able to play soccer in another area.
And that's at least a way you can reduce some of the water usage, but maintain the other areas more robust. I don't know, just spitballing ideas here is kind of what people are saying, so.
Just, just to bring up another issue, we talked about with the winter kill was finding other facilities to play at. Or I wouldn't like it, nobody would like it, but having fall be indoor soccer as well? What are your thoughts on either of those?
That that was our, that was our plan B last year. Is if we would have had to quit at some point, we were going to take it indoors. We probably wouldn't be able to do flag football like that. But we, but we could take it indoors.
Yes, isn't indoor soccer less players for team?
It is.
Okay, I thought it was.
And the rules are a little different.
Yeah.
Could you schedule some of those activities someplace else like our big park out here, I can't. In Central Park, we've got a huge park area there east of the lake.
But those are non-irrigated areas that are going to look like that.
They're all Bermuda, though. I I haven't really looked at them closely, but I'm just saying, if we got some of the use off the rec center and got it someplace else for a year.
Yeah, this is an example of a difference. So that's common Bermuda, which just grows anywhere. And what he plants and maintains is a turf grass, which is very conducive to running and playing sports on.
Right.
Just different.
Would love to have another place to play in Bel Air. Just isn't any. I mean, our neighbors next door at Sunrise, but they have the same issues that we do.
So did we give you enough muddied waters here?
I just, I just need to, I mean, I'll, I'll do what I'm directed to do. And if if I'm told to water once a week, we'll water once a week and we'll do the best we can. And if it becomes an unsafe situation, we will post it closed and our police department will be busy because they're going to be running people off that field.
Yeah, the the most difficult part of this decision is the exposure. I meant, we, I think we, the very first week, we had the timers a little off and I had twenty calls that morning. A lot of people walked near it. So if we do decide to do anything, I, we need a sign that explains. And to Councilmember Dean's point, it's hard to put all that on a sign. And so that's where I'm, I'm really stuck and directing Brian without your guys' help. I know it's a sensitive year.
Says water fields maintained for children's safety.
Okay.
Okay, that's all it needs to say without any explanation. I mean, you can ad lib with that. And and I'd say, let's try to water the fields four, six o'clock in the morning. So there's, there's less observation. There's still going to be observation. I get that. But, you know, set your timer so that they're done by six, so that, so that there's less observation of that you're watering. And if you need to water five days a week just to keep up with the amount of field that you have, I mean, you do this section today and that section tomorrow, like so on and so forth, then do that. I, that's my, my view. I understand some say, oh, that's a bad example. But I'm more focused on the safety aspect here.
I mean, that does bring up an interesting thought because, I mean, we have other properties, right? There's, there's other properties in town, like Catholic Care or other big properties. And I know we have that quadrant map. And we've heard HOAs even complain about, well, we have twenty or fifty zones and we can't water all of it in one day. And I do wonder if we need to think a little bit about the way our plan is written and and maybe allow those businesses to water in their own quadrants. I know that's hard to manage, but maybe that's the answer to allowing people to have the flexibility to have the larger property to still irrigate once a week, but in their quadrant system, like we're telling our citizens to. And I know that's only a few, right? That's the rec, that's Catholic Care, and there might be one or two other properties that are big enough to deal with that. But I mean, that just brings up a thought of how do you allow them the flexibility to be able to maintain irrigation once, you know, once a week?
The plan is written enough with enough flexibility in it that that he can actually make those exceptions to say, okay, you can't do this whole HOA in in one day a week, you, you, it's just not enough time, okay? And so you can actually do a second, second, the second section on a different day. But that's, that's a discretion that he has to manage.
I, we've already had those situations.
You see, this is the same thing, though. Do you want the rec to be a discretionary thing or do we need to make a policy decision?
Well, we're, we're still hearing, though, that if you only water it once a week, that's not enough.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, here's the.
Exception that you're looking.
Here's the, the, the issue.
They're watering just once a week, but they're, but they're so big that they're watering this piece one day and this piece the next. They're never watering the same place more than once a week.
Right. Yeah, no, I understand that. But what we're saying too is to help manage the complaint calls.
The issue I have is under management actions, the city will implement water conservation measures, including operations of fountains, watering the grass, city grounds, parks, filling, meaning we're going to follow this. And it separates the city in the, in the policy that says, city shall do it. Doesn't say recreation, it says grounds. So me having discretion over the policy is not something I like to be in. However, little instances like an HOA that comes and says, hey, we can't get all our zones in at one time. I'll say, yes, you can do it. I'll monitor your specific account to make sure, but that's easy. This is the more difficult one, especially with the exposure, especially with the year. With a lot of those things, I want to make sure and bring this to your attention.
I mean, because obviously we've got a lot of new home construction. So one of the exceptions is probably like you mentioned earlier, we want yards planted. In in this case, we want the rec replanted, right? It's, it's somewhat similar in that it's just a larger scale, right? And it's also impacting probably more people than just the fifty or a hundred new homes that need to get their lawn established. So. So are you saying you would like to have the rec athletics pulled out specifically and and then have some sort of guidance on what work, what we would suggest allowing or?
I'm more in the line of if you, it, I mean, it sounds, it sounds like we have a consensus and that, or not consensus, but I I'm concerned with safety and that's what I would rule as as the manager, give an exemption, put out a sign. However, you guys are going to receive the calls as well if they get upset. So I'm not going to make that in a fishbowl in my office. I'm going to have this discussion with you. So when I do make that decision, you understand where I'm coming from and what, and had your input. So I I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to bring back the policy. I just also want to be upfront with everyone. If this decision's made to go ahead and do as little as we can, kind of like the berm last year, as we can to maintain, then I'm okay with that, but I don't want to bring you guys under fire and then say that type of thing. So that's why I'm having this discussion in the open public.
I know, it makes sense. I mean, people driving by City Hall and seeing green grass and nobody else can have green grass, that's a problem. But us having safe fields that are productively used for all the kids there is completely different thing in my mind. And we should be doing that. In my opinion.
I guess my last question is, what if there, we had a pretty good scenario last year and, like you said, the rain dances, hopefully it happens again. But what if there's a worst case scenario and it's like a hundred degrees and we go thirty days without rain? And we've already put seed in. I I guess I don't know what the cost is, like, are we abandoning it? Whatever we choose, we need to be committed to even under the worst case scenario from a watering perspective.
That would, that would be the direction I would take because we're, we're going to spend some money on some Bermuda grass seed. We're going to spend some money on fertile acres. We're going to spend money on labor and contractors possibly if we do the top dressing, which we need to do on some of those areas. Soccer field is probably okay, but the baseball field has some dips and some low spots that we need to do the sand. I think you spend that money and then abandon it. We're going to spend thousands and thousands of dollars on supplies and then ours. At some point, it needs to be done unless we decide that we're not going to do that for us anymore.
Well, if we get into Emily's situation, we're going to be spending thousands on the water too. So at some point, you just have to say, we're sorry, we can't keep it up. And just leave it alone for now and hope we get some rain. Because if, if it's, if you get a month of a hundred degree days, there's no way you're going to be able to keep grass live, even if you're pouring water on it every day.
Bermuda grass does thrive. That's one thing we have working for us is going back to Bermuda grass.
Here's your mic on.
Bermuda grass does well in.
No, your mic's not on. Turn it on, push the button. Okay. He says.
Okay, now it's on.
Okay, thank you.
The other consideration, and again, this, it's a hard, it's a hard situation. That's why it's before you guys, you know, stage three would be a tough one.
Yeah.
And and then we're projecting some of that. So that's weighed on my mind as well. Not only the cost we have to put into it, but what happens if we go stage three in July? Then then there's no recovering that cost. So it's, it's difficult.
And I think that's back to Tom's suggestion is let's not do everything out there. Let's just do the playing area maybe. And see if we can't keep that minimum.
Yeah, makes sense. Do the due diligence as best as we can and optimize as best as we can. And I mean, the cards fall as they do, but at least we're trying to help our citizens to have options to be outside, be on grass versus dirt or mud. And I don't know, I just think it's, because we do have some advantage here. We do have wells. We can try and definitely make sure we keep Wichita well under their requirements, no question. But yeah, if push comes to shove and it gets even worse, then yeah, we probably have to bite the bullet then. But that's then and not now.
Speaking of wells, does anybody know if there's water underneath the rec center? There are in places in town, we know that.
A well guy told me there's no water that's sustainable water in Bel Air. Unless, I don't know if you, how far you'd have to go to even try, but he said, for some reason in Bel Air, they don't really have wells, right? Because we're on top of a rock. And now if you get shallow water, I mean, if you wanted to get it out of the sand around the sewer line or something, there's probably water, but it's not going to last long.
Well, I, I know a couple of houses here in Bel Air that have water wells and they've used them for thirty years or so to water their yards with. It is not good water.
Oh.
It's going to be heavy and iron or stuff like that, but it is enough to supply their watering requirements.
I think it's from alluvial wells from the perch perch water table. One other thing I want to make a comment on is reuse water. I know we send some now to Willow Bend and they irrigate with it. And we have never done that as a city, and I've brought that up a couple of times. I think if we're going to continue to be in a drought condition, and even if we're not, that is certainly something to consider is how would we pipe off the fifty third line to the recs? The rec center is the obvious one for the city because it's the largest land area that we have in any one area. That's something that would have capital expense, obviously, but that's something to consider as a city is how do we reuse that asset for our use, like we send to Willow Bend to use.
You're going to have to put some ponds in to do that. I mean, that's KDH's rules. So you'd have to do some work with that.
Sure.
It'd take, take some, some study to do.
Yep.
It's certainly something to think about, you know, and we're talking, I'm trying to have a conversation with with some other folks about doing something too, but.
Does our gray water pipe run? Is it anywhere near the rec center?
I think it goes down fifty third.
Fifty third.
So it's about a mile.
Close, that's half a mile.
Half a mile.
Straight.
Well, I, I believe it goes from CCU to fifty third to Rock. Along fifty third to Rock Road, then it runs down Rock Road to Willow Bend.
Okay, so if we.
The obvious option would be Central Park.
Costs a lot, but but that's what, that's probably what we should be looking at anyway, is how to use that gray water because it's all just being dumped out someplace anyway.
The obvious option would be Central Park with City Hall and with all the, the park area and those ponds that already exist. Like you said, mayor, ponds are needed to make that work, but we're not going to solve that tonight. But since we brought up water, I figured I'd add that in, reuse water is something we ought to consider expanding our use of.
Yeah, I'm ignorant. Why do we need a pond for using the gray water?
It's required by KDH rules. I can't explain it. I just know that that's a rule.
I think depending on the use that you're going to use the reuse is is probably what causes creates that. I know the pump station that the city has that sends it to Spirit does not involve a pond. But I don't know enough about the regulations around it to to tell you what requirements are.
Can't explain it either. I just, I just know that there's, that's the regulation, so.
But I definitely think it's worth looking into further.
So.
Maybe they're worried about runoff, but.
Okay, are there other things we need to discuss tonight? All right.
I'm tapped out.
Call it evening. Thank you, everybody, for your time and we will see everybody next Tuesday. Have a good night.